And Sam is getting the recording started, that's great. All right, go ahead Chair.
Okay, I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting of February 8th to order. And I will start with my Zoom script. This meeting is being conducted utilizing teleconferencing and electronic means consistent with state of California executive orders regarding the COVID-19 pandemic. Zoom is being utilized for this meeting. In case of technical issues, meetings will be uploaded to the city website as soon as possible after this meeting. We will be conducting today's meeting in a virtual setting using Zoom. Planning commissioners and staff are participating from remote locations practicing appropriate social distancing. Members of the public may view and listen to the meeting by use of Zoom as noted on the city's website and as noted on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to speak to the planning commission may do so during public comment. Or make comment on agenda items during the discussion of each item must be logged into Zoom. Anyone using abusive, vulgar, offensive, threatening or harassing language, personal attacks of any kind, or offensive terms that target specific individuals or groups will be muted and removed from the meeting. Please do not abuse this new way to provide public comment. Okay, and with that, we will start with a roll call.
Okay, Commissioner Kelly?
Here.
Commissioner Burns? And you're muted Commissioner Burns?
I know, I just noticed.
Thanks Debbie. Commissioner Fernandez?
Here.
Vice Chair Ottinger?
Here.
And Chair Fritz?
Here.
And Commissioner Douche is not in attendance.
Right, so the next item is approval of minutes from December 14th. Does anyone have any comments on those minutes? Everett?
Thank you. On page 16.
All right, hold on, give me a second to get there, I'm gonna try to do that. Any changes, live time.
Let me know. Okay, about the middle of the page, where it says Commissioner Fernandez announced that he would be leaving meeting. It kinda sounds like abruptly left. But as you recall, and as I stated at the meeting, I was in Mexico. And had an uncle that was very ill, and so I just let everybody know at the beginning, actually before the meeting, let the chair know, and then at the meeting, let everyone know that wasn't able to continue with the rest of the agenda, and I was grateful to have read any of it, so. Just wanna make sure that's reflected.
Thank you. Commissioner Fernandez, do you want us to add something like after this item due to personal emergency or something like that, that way it's?
Yeah, and I had, as stated before the meeting started.
Got it.
Yeah. Thank you.
We will amend to reflect that, assuming they get approved tonight.
Good, thank you.
You didn't just wanna make it sound like you left in a huff.
Right. Poof, I was gone.
I'm leaving.
That'll just say the personal circumstances.
Anyone else have any corrections? And would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move that we approve the minutes of February 8th.
December 8th.
Oh, December, I'm sorry.
December, I'm sorry, December 14th.
I'm looking at the date.
December 14th.
Oh, okay.
I'm looking at the agenda date.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, you have a first and a second, any other?
She's muted.
I'm muted, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second, I'll do a roll vote. Commissioner Kelly? Commissioner Kelly, I think you just muted, there you go.
Okay, there we go. Yeah, I approve.
All right, Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ottinger?
Aye.
And Chair Fritz?
Aye.
Okay, the amendments are approved as amended.
All right. The next item on the agenda is, this is the opportunity for members of the public to speak to the commission on an item that is not on tonight's agenda, so if you have anything that you would like to say, you'll have three minutes, and it looks like we have one person from the public. See no indication of hands raising?
No, and I can note that we have not received any comments from the public since our last meeting in regards to commission business.
Great, then we will close that item and move on to any conflicts of interest from the commission.
Chair Fritz, I do wanna note that Commissioner Douche has joined the meeting at 6:00 or 7:00 PM.
Apologies for being tardy.
All right, so again, any conflicts of interest from anyone? All right, then, let us move on to our first regular agenda item. 6A, review of standard conditions of approval. We have a staff report, please.
Okay, and Associate Planner John Jay will be giving a report on this item.
Thank you, Gary. Good evening, commission members. The document that we have here is a standard conditions of approval that the design review or design guidelines subcommittee and staff have developed over the past few months, which includes standard conditions that'll help streamline condition writing for various planning projects, both discretionary, that will go before board, commission or council, and ministerial, those subject only to objective standards and conditions adopted by the city such as SB 35 projects. Discretionary projects such as the planning commission reviews will still have specific site conditions along with this document of standard conditions of approval. The document is being developed for several reasons. One, to ensure the city has an appropriate adopted objective standards and conditions for ministerial projects. To have conditions of approval for all projects and to streamline review by staff and by the various commissions and boards in the city. The state of California has adopted various laws in the last few years that limit city discretion on certain housing projects and requires approval of such projects at a ministerial level or staff level. Some projects such as SB 35 and some others. By adopting a standard set of conditions of approval, the city can ensure that the city standards can be placed on a project through discretionary review process such as the design review or review of a conditional use permit for those projects, and if there are any items within this packet that need to be changed as far as grammar or clerical errors, you can email me directly at or reach out to me via phone at 707-823-6167.
Okay, does anyone have any questions about this item of John?
And Chair Fritz also, as a member of the design guidelines subcommittee, if you wanna wanted to say anything about the review or your thoughts, I think that would be helpful perhaps as part of the presentation part.
Sure, yeah, so we did get these a couple, on a couple of occasions on the design review subcommittee, and were able to discuss some of them, and then John kinda went back and made a couple of, you know, made some changes and came back and issued them again, and we, I don't know if anyone else, I know I spoke with John specifically about some things that I have, I don't know if John had further conversation with any other committee members, the committee hasn't met for a couple of months on this item. And I did just speak with John, I think, last week to do the final kinda edits. So, yeah, so I think, I think we got it where I think it makes sense, I actually did have a couple other clarifications that I wanted to add tonight, but I guess I was actually asked a question or just clarification, so this standard conditions of approval are only for, you know, applications that require some kind of planning, either discretionary, either staff or planning commission or design review kind of requirement, like if you're just applying for a building permit for a residential remodel or addition that doesn't necessarily go for the planning department, these things don't apply to you, it's for you know, bigger projects that either we would see or you would just see as a staff, at the staff level, and be able to approve, like a use permit or something like that.
Correct, so it'd be most kind of entitlement projects where they're going through some sort of designer view or a condition on use permit or something like that. It wouldn't be subject to building permit applications where a lot of these conditions frankly wouldn't either apply or they're kind of already put forth within the building permit review process.
Right, some things like the indemnification language that we have in this document, I believe the building permit process is very similar, if not the exact same language when you sign your name to free issuance of a building permit.
Yeah. Right, so does anyone have any thoughts or questions or comments on this? On these items? Kathy?
Yeah, no, I didn't, it's good to understand this because it was a work for me to go through it and figure out all the different sections that you were working on. The only thing that really struck me was when under the engineering and public works section, it talked about deviations from city standards, so it seems like almost any item in these standards could an application could deviate from them. But I suppose now we've got a process for that, is that what that is about? I mean, if those are the standards, then it seems like we shouldn't be deviating from them.
Correct, and I can
if the state comes forward, but I'm guessing that's why that is there, because occasionally, something is gonna deviate from it, even though the state's gonna say, I'm sorry, just have to approve it.
Yes, Commissioner Ottinger, that, and maybe I can offer one example, I don't know which condition in particular we're talking about, but one of the standards, engineering standards that we have in our zoning ordinance is that to underground utilities from the pole to the new structure. That said, it also says in that code unless otherwise approved by the city engineer. There are instances where it is just so cross prohibitive, or it doesn't make sense because the city's project is gonna go, you know, go forward, gonna do it anyway. In that case, there's an in-game fee, but it also requires the city engineer's approval, so that would kind of be a deviation from the standard. I don't know, but, you know, and then there are times like that where it, the city engineer can approve things like that.
Okay.
You're correct, the way it's written is that you're subject to the standard, no matter what process you go through, planning process you're going through, whether it's a discretionary designer view, a use permit as John said, or a ministerial, you know, SB 35 process, SB 9 process, or where, you know, you would normally be going through designer view, but under state law, you're allowed to go through a different process. You'd still, we still wanna make sure that all of these same standard conditions apply to all those projects.
Yeah.
Anything else Kathy?
No, that was the one thing that jumped out to me. Other than the idea, you know, as I was reading through it, it occurred to me that if you're working with a document like that, it might be good to have not like chapters, but a heading at each, at each section, I mean, they're numbered, are they always numbered the same? If I were working with that document, I'd wanna be able to just scan through and see, is that landscaping or is that infrastructure, is that the PDF plan submission paragraph, where is that in, you know, while I'm working with it? That was my only thought, was to add a subtitle, I guess, to each defining section, just to make it useful.
So do you mean like the, like engineering's roadway improvements and drainage improvements, that kinda heading?
Yeah. I came up with the idea at the, in the first section, and I wrote like number four was landscaping, number five was corrections and modifications, and number six was indemnity, you know, things like that, just so that when you're working with the document, you can easily jump to that section to review it. That trying to remember what number it was. I know we get into that when we're looking at conditions of approval, and there's 48 of them, we're trying to, you know, which which one was I was looking at, you know, just, just an idea, I don't know, maybe it's not standard to do that.
I mean, they are, they are sort of in categories, so you're kinda thinking of a further subdivision within each category?
Yeah, just like one, one or two bold-faced words that describe what that section is about. Yeah, is it exterior lighting, or is it encroachment, or is it public right-of-way?
Yeah, and I could see, I mean, there may be some that are just so general, where there's one of them, it might not make sense to have a category, but there certainly, there are a couple related to construction management, and there's a couple related to like plan submitted, you know, the actual permitting process.
Yeah, side block warps, things like that. I mean, as I was reading it, I just pulled out some, you know, phrases of things, what is this section about, cause I was that's how I was wrapping my mind around it to understand which each of those areas were. But I don't know if that's standard in planning procedure to do that. Kinda like a subhead for each item, along with the number.
Yeah, I mean, I see that helping with some, but some of them might be a little hard, so it would be a little bit maybe inconsistent.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
Good idea, throw it up, throw it out, I don't know.
Anyone else have any thoughts about subdivisions of categories? Is on that?
I'm gonna see Everett has his hand up for an initial question.
Yeah, Everett, do you have something?
Yeah, thank you. You know, defer to Chair Fritz and Commissioner, fellow Commissioner Douche for items in this section that's totally out of my expertise, but, so same thing is Commissioner, you're, you know, is this, am I supposed to know this, or is this general knowledge, just coming in from a look of not really, not sure, should understand this, it should be categorized. But, you know, I just defer to you guys on that. I just had a question on page three, standard conditions of project approval. Item number six, if you wanna go there, then I'll ask my question. Item six, where it starts the city of Sebastopol and its agents. I'm just, just out of curiosity, are any of those agents, et cetera, is that who, planning commission, or?
Yes, that would include any of the commission board members, council members, consultants that are, every, all of that.
Is there any definition?
Doing the work in the city.
Anywhere what an agent is?
I would have to ask the city attorney, because this language is directly from them, so I would imagine that it's an evil term of art.
Okay, yeah, so somebody sees that, then it's like, okay, what does that mean, who does it, that was my only thought about that, is I really wasn't sure, you know, who you or what you were talking about on that.
Yeah, I see from Zach's, Zach's not, I think in the industry, it's generally understood that that, what that means, but
Yeah, okay, yeah, I wasn't sure, cause I could say it's not my, not my
Yeah, like all of, all of my contracts, you know, it's an indemnification clause, and that's, yeah, that's very standard.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I just, I just wasn't sure who was included in that, okay.
Yeah, yeah. And probably this exact same language isn't like every city's standard conditions of approval. It's definitely been a cut and paste kind of, someone figured it out. Anyone else have any comments or questions?
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead Linda.
Um, I believe it's page seven of DINE. And it's about existing wells, septic tanks, and underground fuel storage tanks. So is this, is that just existing language in terms of, you know, permanently being disabled or destroyed? Or are there any? Don't some property owners have private wells?
Commissioner Kelly, I don't know of private, any existing wells, although it, this would happen if there was a like say someone in our sphere of influence who's on a well and annexes into the city, then they would have an existing well, and if they did development that followed this, there are about a dozen properties or so in the city that are on septic. Because they're, you know, downhill from the sewer mains, a certain distance, and so that's outlined in our code. And then obviously underground fuel storage tanks is more of a gas station kind of issue.
Right. So if it's properties in our sphere of influence have an existing well, and they wanna do some improvements that would, you know, be just standard discretionary by the building department, will they be required to destroy their wells and hook up to city?
Well, that is actually a good question. John, did you discuss this with Tony at all?
I did not. I did not, I'm not sure as to if, I would assume if they were going to connect to city sewer and water, that the use for that well or septic tank would no longer be needed. And so
Either can I, go ahead. Can I jump in?
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead Zach. So this is, this is pretty typical language for any building type permit, and really what it's saying is if you have an existing tank or an existing well or other facility that is not part of the improvement plans, and not, is not existing in a, in a way that is, or is not existing in a way that is up to, you know, up to par, it needs to be destroyed. So for instance, if you are developing a site and you're putting in a new septic system, and there's an old septic system, you have to destroy the old one, and you have to do that under the permit, and that's what this is, this condition is about, it's saying any obsolete or unused infrastructure of that kind that's not part of the permit would be taken out. You wouldn't need to take out a perfectly good well if you were gonna continue to use it for irrigation or something.
But I wonder if there should be some clarifying language about that, cause it just, this just says all existing wells, makes it sound like
I absolutely agree, and for those who are on septic, and that's the, like, you're not gonna have them destroyed, obviously, if they're using it in good condition. And that's their access instead of sewer, so, or the underground storage tank, you're not gonna make it, the way it reads, you can make a gas station, destroy those, even if they're in use, so I think thank you Commissioner Douche, I think, yes, we can clarify that. Obviously, and, or we can refer to Tony to find some language to clarify that, to be
Or maybe, maybe it could be like, or as you know, waived by the city engineer or something like that, you know, you know, if, you know, if you got something and say, look, I have a well, I'm using this well, or I wanna use this well for irrigation or something like that, city engineer can waive that requirement to abandon it or destroy it possibly.
Right.
Unless they have the biggest straw and just suck out our whole groundwater. Now I have a friend in Santa Rosa, and is, is right in Roseland, and happens to have a well, and has, you know, updated a little bit, and I don't think she pulled any permits, oops, I didn't say any names or anything. But with this drought going on, it was the only way she was gonna keep her her fruit trees and everybody alive, so I wouldn't wanna stop somebody that's that can use it. They may not even be using it for irrigation, but may have to, but I don't know. You know, it's, I can see both sides.
Yeah, and it may be, I was just doing a quick search of our municipal code, we have in our health and safety that we have adopted in terms of well, certain chapters of the county code. So I suspect that's part of what's going on here. But, yeah, we can definitely clarify this language a little bit more. Okay, thank you.
Kathy, just something else?
Yeah, on 52, since we were there, the third line at the bottom of here says, a waiver for CCTV inspection may be waived, kind of a double negative, so I thought I might just read, the city engineer may waive the CCTV inspection, something like that, it just seems like it's
Yeah, or a waiver may be requested and approved by, and may be approved by the city engineer, it's
Yeah, makes sense. Deborah?
They had brought up my question, which is about the wells, but maybe offering a solution as well, which is, it seems to me like they're two separate issues, one is the septic and one is the well, it makes sense why you would want them to dismantle a septic because you don't want someone putting illegal buildings on and, you know, tapping into an old septic system, but for a well, you know, I don't think they should be, I don't think they should be in the same subject like that, they should be handled separately, one is septic and one is well, and I, you know, especially with the drought, it seems, you know, really like nobody would wanna dismantle a well right now. So could they be addressed separately?
I'm not completely sure, I'd have to check with the city engineer and see if that's something that can be separated, or if it has to be one of those all-inclusive kind of package items.
And if it's about unused or disused or non-functioning, then it's probably in the point, cause it means it's not functioning anyway, so. And the point is to get it out of the ground, so it doesn't cause any sort of groundwater contamination, or the septic stuff, same thing, and it's you know, you would never really break up the concrete septic tank and fill it in with concrete, and Zach probably knows better than I how you deal with that, but you either have to remove it or fill it in.
Yeah, you have, the, the standards for the destruction of those things are referenced, I think, if I can't remember the paragraph, but I think I saw that it referenced the PRMD standards at the Sonoma County.
Yeah, that's correct, we do have any of those, yes, we some, we actually require them to get the permit from PRMD
Right.
before issuing the building permit here.
Yes, and I think the language, how it's destructive is defined by that permit process, but probably more importantly, I believe this language is standard, and the city engineer or you know, one of our local septic consultants should be able to provide that language, and I'm sure it says you know, some specific language about unused or replaced infrastructure, and I think that's what's missing there, is, is it shouldn't start with all, it should start with all unused or all whatever the right terminology is, but I, you know, I've probably read this condition a thousand times, I don't remember the words, but I know it's a a very standard piece, and I think it's just a question of getting the correct standardized language that describes when you would need to destroy those facilities.
All right, anyone else have any thoughts about any of these?
I have a couple. Forty-two and forty-three, these are stormwater standards, and, and actually fifty-one as well, they all use the language if applicable, and I believe they should if possible, I'd rather say if applicable under section such and such, or if applicable under, you know, standard such and such, so if applicable is subjective unless it's referencing what it's applicable, why, why it would be applicable, does that make sense? So let me say, as a layperson, if I'm reading this, I'm going, if applicable, provide evidence of notice of intent, da-da-da-da-da. How would I know if it's applicable?
Right, how do you know, it's either a standard you can look up to see if you have a project site larger than an acre, then you're subject to the ongoing protection, stormwater protection plan, so you can understand if it is applicable to you or not, I think that's a good suggestion.
Yeah, and I know on paragraph fifty-one, which is relating to stormwater SWIP standards and those kinds of things, I know there is a standard trigger. So I dropped, I think we should reference that trigger rather than using the words if applicable. And the last comment I had, or the only other one, was I think forty-six.
Can I, I'm sorry, before you go into that Zach, I kinda wanted to throw forty-one. Can I, I'm sorry, before you go into that, Zach, I I kind of wanted to throw forty-one into whatever that is. It doesn't say applicable. But I think it could say applicable kind of to your point, because it, I don't think that that necessarily applies to every single project. I think there's probably some threshold or something that would kick that in. And maybe that again should be referenced or clarified as to what that. Standard is that we makes that a requirement. I'm sorry, go ahead. That was your comments, Zach.
The language in forty-six, grading more than fifty cubic yards shall be subject to a city grading permit. I think that. I'm not sure whether the right term is grading more than or disturbing or cutting more than or. Or whether there's also um in and I'm thinking of the county standard here. It it's a little more complex than just grading fifty cubic yards. Because I think that's an arguable. I don't, it's not quite specific enough, I don't think. Uh and then it should be not sub uh should require a city grading permit, not be rather than be subject to.
And so Commissioner Dowd, are you thinking about um when you say it's more complicated than that cut? What I've seen a lot in building planning departments is um or in engineering departments is. The cut for a foundation isn't treated as crating because it's not disturbing the ground around. So it does, it's sometimes, it's not always included in that fifty cubic yards.
Uh exactly. And I think that's why this should be clear clarified. If you look up and I can't, I I could. If I had more than one screen on the go today, I could probably do it, but PRMD have a. Essentially a grading questionnaire that has the language. I believe the language is either on it or it's on the. Uh accompanying, um you know, they have these sort of cheat sheets you can pick up from the department there. Um and it has the language on there, what triggers a grading permit. And and they have a survey. Um that you have to fill out for all applications. And I don't know if the city of Supersport has that, but if they don't, perhaps uh they should. And perhaps it should be referenced here.
So Zach can respond to that because I do have two screens. So this is, this is PRMD's website. Um and this is what they have. They they actually specify it as cut or fill exceeding. Yards and not by nature is cut and fill is what either cuts of the landscape or fill on the landscape. Not within the building footprint.
Agreed, but also we've got graded in three feet depth and cuts creating slopes greater than five feet. So I think all the, it seems to me you would want to mimic this standard.
Yeah, okay, John, I'm going to send you this and perhaps this link and we can discuss this with Tony.
And you see there's. On your screen, Carrie, there's also a grading uh permit questionnaire that would help an applicant um. Which is a very simple document to fill out. Uh and I I don't know whether we, this is something you could have as part of the permit process. This is a really important area because this is where we, you know, this comes up. When people, and I can think of a number of sites in Supersport that are ripe for development that will. Have this, this discussion would come up. And I think having these clear standards is important.
Yeah, that's an excellent point, and I have no problem asking my compatriot colleagues if I can steal their forms. We do it all the time. And I share ours too. I, you know, I'm just like, hey, let's not create the world. We're all in this together. Don't reinvent the wheel.
Uh Everett?
Yeah, um I'm just curious, is this like a hard copy version, electronic version, both? In other words, if this was an electronic version and something references like in accordance with the most current. Requirements, whatever, can you just have a link to those requirements? Um just just out of curiosity.
This is the question, how how people would find out about them?
Yeah, well, yeah, just wondering like, is this what's, I know this would be what somebody would see as a hard copy. Is this also what someone would see as an electronic version? Or are there, is there an electronic version that also has links to some of the areas that they reference to?
Uh we we don't have a link version, so it would just be this as a PDF. Um so the way the commission would see this. Um going forward, and I think John outlined this in the staff report, is that you still have your condition, your exhibit A, which is the finance for approval. Um you would have an exhibit B that's specific conditions of approval. So that might be like specific operating hours. Or good neighbor policies or something specific to that particular project or site. Um like for the very, the the Von Chapman's project, the condition about the acoustic. In acoustic insulation buffer between the music room and the ADU, that's a specific condition. This would then be an exhibit C, which is the standard conditions. We don't have them with hyperlinks. I I don't think we have the staff capability to do that right now. Uh but most people, as as Zach is noting, most people who are in the construction industry, the contractors will understand what and architects, but. What standards apply. And we have links to those things on the city's website.
Okay, I'm just wondering, like, as as you're making corrections or changes, is it that. It tends to add a link and then kind of just improve as you go along, or is it better just to kind of leave it all the same?
Zach?
Uh from my perspective, a document like this should not have links, just because the standards change, they get moved, the links break. It should simply reference whatever the code section or the the standard section is, so that the applicant is responsible for looking up the current. And understanding the current uh version. I think this is part of the way these standards are written, is the onus is on the applicant to find the right information. And uh you're, there's also, uh I forget, no standard at the section in here, but it talks about an applicant who is. Building adjacent to a, you know, Laguna, or for example, for us, would need to ascertain what permits they would need from. Fish and wildlife, et cetera, so that um if the city then find themselves in a position of saying, did you get this permit? The applicant doesn't get to come back and say, well, I didn't know that that was the thing. It that's that's the diligence of the applicant.
Alright, um I actually had a couple other comments. And um so on page four of the staff report and. John and I talked a lot about this. I'm still going to be kind of picky about. Um this is like, and I'm glad Zach's here because I'd love to get his feedback on this. This has to do with the construction management plan. Um and specifically. Um the construction management plan, um so in the middle of the page where it talks about the a twenty-four by thirty-six inch sign. Um of the approved construction management plan being posted at the site. And I guess one of my concerns and I've discussed with John is that. You know, one of the things in the construction management plan would require is a construction schedule. And those can be changed a lot. And I think it's fine to keep the planning. The you know, the planning department updated. If a construction schedule changes, you know, you can update that your construction management plan with the planning department. But to have to post a new sign every time a construction schedule changes. I mean, you basically every time it rains, you add days to your construction schedule. So. Do they have to come out here and replace that sign every single time? It seems a little bit onerous and a little bit tedious. And so I'm just thinking, maybe, you know, the sign has those items A through F that are listed there. But, you know, for the construction management plan, maybe it's just a reference to say. A construction management plan is on file with the city planning department, you know, contact this number if you'd like to see. A copy of the construction management plan or something like that, just so it doesn't have to be such a. Again, such a like regularly updated thing. Um anyway, do you have any thoughts about that, Zach, in terms of, is that? Is that onerous or is it not onerous to kind of keep that updated?
Well, it's what you might, it's what you might call a soft um condition.
Yeah.
This is one of those conditions that's there in theory and that frankly. Few people follow the letter of the law. They simply post a approximation of what the. CMP plant or the construction management plan might be. Um I mean, it the. The items listed under that section where it says a twenty-four by thirty-six, it seems, it would seem to me reasonable to have a. You know, this is a public facing document, so it's sort of a like your site entrance where you have all your hard hat signs and your, you know. Uh the point of contact, those kinds of things. I think this information is appropriate, right? Because uh but I agree with you, having the full construction management plan in a printed uh laminated. Um copy is not probably not reasonable. So I guess the way I would. Improve upon this, I think uh is to have the requirement be a laminated plan with items A through F. Uh and the other construction, other construction management plans available on site or something like that. If that makes sense?
Makes sense to me. Yeah, I just thought that, you know, having a document that could be somewhat a living document is kind of a. A little bit unwieldy to have to post a new sign every time something might change in the construction management plan.
Yeah, no, I agree.
And also I think it just might be unwieldy to have to print, it could be, you know, several pages long and have to print it on a twenty-four by thirty-six sign. Could be a little unwieldy. It just that, yeah, either say it's in the site trailer, on the job site, or at the planning department or something like that, so people can. You know, go look at it if they want to look at it, make sure things are being complied with, but. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a good idea to um uh force that there be a email for and a phone number for the. Contractor and person responsible for managing the project, that kind of thing. I mean, we certainly would do that in our. Sites as a matter of course, uh to as a sort of a responsible neighbor type uh standard. And you've reminded me, and I don't know whether I saw it in here, but does the standard under the. Construction management plan reference to these noise ordinance?
Um it does in so much that it has the hours of construction.
Okay.
Are allowed, which construction is exempt from their as urbons during those hours. So that's the the link there. Yep.
Oh, that it should be limited to. So in that group, I see. Yes.
Yeah, that's actually, Zach, just it's right above the underlying twenty-four by thirty-six is the.
Yeah, I see.
Plan, it's, yeah.
And then in um item fifteen, I think you just need to um at the very end of that, I I think it just say building. Permit application, not just a building application. And then item sixteen and. Yeah, I I know we talked about this, John. I I just I still feel like there should be some kind of. So the issue with this for me and 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 seventeen is similar. The original condition said, you know, you have to hire surveyor at, you know, to make sure your building is in the right height. And I suggested. You know, if it's obviously, if it's close, I think that's reasonable. But if if the high allowance is thirty-five feet and your building is twenty feet tall. I don't think we need to require a surveyor to tell you that. Um so I think this, you know, if it's, if your proposed building height is within two feet. Of the allowable allowable building height, I think that's a good standard. But I think there should be something for the setback as well. I mean, you could have, you know, a big property where you're nowhere near the property line. And I don't think it makes sense to require a survey to tell you you're nowhere near the property line, but I don't know. If anyone has any, maybe Zach give any suggestions on, I don't know if it's like within ten percent or within five feet of a property line. Or or five feet of a setback line or ten feet of a, you know, I don't know exactly what the the metric should be, but I think we need some. Metric rather than requiring a surveyor for every project that we know is already not, you know, not going to be an issue.
Yeah, that's that's kind of why I left this one um unchanged from when we spoke, just to get more input on. What that kind of rough number should be. Cause I know, I mean, you could dice it half a dozen ways um. And what what would be required. Um but yeah, I I I agree with you that. If it's obviously outside of, you know, what the building setback would be, um then it doesn't make sense to have. A surveyor come out and tell you that, yeah, you're thirty-five feet away from.
Yeah.
The property line and, you know, when it's pretty obvious that you're not going to be close to it, so.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if it's again two feet like the height or if it's five feet or if it's a. I I don't know what the the right number would be. Do you have any thoughts, Zach?
Well, so I think the first question here would be, do we have a requirement? And I know, I'm pretty sure I know the answer here, but it says that the project should include uh. Property line shall be physically identified string or equal. Well, if. The, how do you identify a a property line, I guess is my question. You can look at the fence and say, well, that's the property line. But you may or may not, that may or may not be correct. So is there any need, i- is there? I I mean. I think it's good to have site staking done. Uh and on anything other than a very minor project, it would be a matter of. Uh you know, it'd be a standard step. Um but I think Paul, perhaps what you're saying is if you're doing a, I don't know. A a a very small project that would normally warrant staking. Um and it's obviously, so I'm I'm sort of thinking out loud here. But um I I generally like the idea of it needing to be done properly because it's so often in these. Uh uh sites, it's a little unclear where the property line is and whether we're, whether you're um, you know. Uh uh I mean, I guess the point here would be for, maybe the language should be for any project that includes new foundations or retaining walls within, you know. I don't know what our biggest setback is, but you know, within. Ten feet of the required setback, say, uh a survey should be required, something like that.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, yeah, there's certainly, like I met with a client today where they want to do an addition and. You know, the property line is at an angle to the house and it's questionable. It's exactly like, you know, if they can do the addition where they want or it has to. Be set in. And so I told them they need to get a survey because I don't know exactly where the property line is. Um but there's also situations, and I'm just thinking of like larger properties, like, you know, where you live, Carrie, or along First Street. Or Leland, where you've got this, you know, an acre or a half an acre or whatever, this kind of big piece of land and you're doing a, you know, ten foot addition on the back of your house. That's still, you know, thirty feet from your rear setback line. You know, we don't need to require a survey in that situation because it's obvious it's nowhere near the setback line. So I, yeah, I don't know if the standard is, yeah, within ten feet. Of a setback line, if that's the good number.
I take your point, Paul, but I also, you know, have seen uh situations where someone builds something that they believe to be miles out of the way of their. Uh property line, only to find that they built in a pigeon easement or, you know, septic easement. So it's not just property lines. So my my feeling is from the from the city's perspective and not thinking about the applicants so much, but from the city's perspective. I think requiring some sort of surveying makes very good sense because it's going to. Uh you know, for a surveying company, they're going to do a quick record search and see if there's any easements or other things they need to know about when establishing. Lines. So. From, from the perspective of looking out for city interests, I'd leave that should probably leave this pretty. As a more or less as a requirement. I don't think it's onerous um to have a, you know, a site line of survey. Surveyor come and, you know, find the monuments. That's all we have to do uh potentially. Um.
Well, they may have to, it 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 could be more onerous. I mean, those, especially in older parts of town. I mean. Like the site I was at today, I was looking, I was looking for monuments. I couldn't find any monuments, you know, nothing. So they don't have to have a cut, a survey or come out. Set monuments. It could be easier, it could be difficult, you know, so it. I'm just concerned about for someone that just wants to do a simple addition, that then they're spending, you know, five thousand, seventy-five hundred dollars. To get a survey done when they were only hoping to, you know, add a bedroom for thirty thousand dollars or something, you know, now we've just added. Kind of a lot of cost. And in some cases, yeah, you need to do it. Like I told that this couple today, I told them, yeah, you need to have a survey done. It's too close to call. I just don't want to discourage people or put an onerous requirement on something that. Uh you know, I don't, I don't know. Maybe maybe we just leave it in there and people want to complain about it. Maybe they can be, you know, given an exception, say, look. It's obvious I'm nowhere near it. Can I get?
If I can just, what happens as city staff, I can, maybe I can give a little bit of background. You know, part of this condition is. Because we don't have a condition that we're requiring a survey, you know, the survey. You know, the survey is the big, is the big turn. Having someone find the nearest, you know, monument or find the property pin. I mean, some homeowners are able to do that if it's a newer subdivision, but yes, Paul, you're right, absolutely, if it's an older subdivision. Um but John and I were talking about this and he had a horror story that I'll let him tell. Uh but I have seen, I've also seen a, yeah, someone assumes the fence is a property line. They did an addition for a small, this water heater bump out, it turned out it's on their neighbor's property. And it was, ended up being a really big deal. And they thought it was like five or seven feet away. Um because they were going on that fence and I think there's um you know, this, there is a certain um, a commissioner, I'll just say from the cities, um while people sign indemnification, it does create a big mess for city staff if some, if we were to allow something like that. Um and I and I do know of one instance where some someone was permitted to build the deck and it ended up, yeah, being over our water main or something. And it's, well, the city ends up having to pay for that. If it's, if we permit something over our water main, it's, it's a very difficult situation to to fix. Um and John, you can tell your little horror story too, because that's pretty recent, actually.
Yeah, absolutely. So um before I was with the city of Sebastopol, I worked um with the city of Santa Rosa doing the fire rebuild um projects. And we had a project there that's um went off of what they assumed to be their uh pins and started construction, got all the way to framing. The neighbor next door came in um at a, you know, later point in time, got a survey done. Um and the neighbor that was at framing ended up using the the neighbor next door's pins instead. And um forty feet of their home was within the side yard setback. Um and had to be demoed out and kind of rebuilt. So you know, I always let people know that if you're that close to the property line, it's always recommended to get something like that. And I typically don't recommend people build that close to your minimum setback line anyways. Um so that's up, it it does happen and um it can get real cost. I mean, like you said, the five thousand, seventy-five thousand is is a steep price, but um if you have a house that's at framing and you've got forty feet of wall that you need to redesign and um redo that, five thousand is pennies on the on dollar at that point. So um but yeah, I can, I understand both of your guys' um.
So a couple of ways we might be able to handle this. One is um if, yeah, if there's a, like a ten feet from a setback line, um that's probably the easiest and clearest. Um or something that says if you're um, you know, just like the waiver from the city engineer. Uh but if you're more than five feet or seven feet from your, or the ten feet from the a setback, and and I would want it to be from the setback, not from the property line.
Yeah.
Um that you can apply that uh for a waiver from the planning department and we can handle it from there. That way we have the ability to kind of look at, is it um, you know, part of it is how much scrutiny is a project under, right? Um from our perspective as well, um and that that will help us um. But to have some standard, and and this is not a new struggle, this is, you know, I've probably been in the public sector for ten years. I've been dealing with this kind of thing for ten years because it is always a yeah, you don't and people, you know, you want to make things, projects doable for for the public. Um it's their property and they have the right to develop it, but at the same time, um we do need to, we are the regulatory body and we need to make sure we're upholding everyone to the same standards.
So I wonder, um. Go ahead, Zach.
I was just going to clarify. So your proposition would be to leave the standard essentially as written, but say it really basically say if you are building uh more than ten feet away from any property setback line, you could apply for a waiver from the city engineer.
Correct, yeah.
Uh I like that idea. I think that's actually quite a safe way of making sure it's addressed.
Yeah, but yeah, I think that makes sense. And again, like I guess, you know, to my earlier example, if someone's just doing a bedroom addition or whatever, you know, these aren't really, that's not a discretionary permit, so these wouldn't necessarily apply. You can still recommend people do it, but it wouldn't be for, you know, a single family homeowner typically that's doing a small addition, although again, like I I recommend people do it if there's a situation where I think it's it's important, but not, you know, not every situation I think does warrant a survey.
Right. And yes, and you're correct, Paul, for uh that there's, you know, the building, if something is just a building permit. Now, the building department also has the ability to say, hey, you know, you're building right up to the setback, you need to you know, or or they wrote it the planning, we can say, hey, we we need to confirm that.
Yeah.
And even, you know, Chair Fritz, even though I'm a a pretty large property, because I'm on septic and I'm a septic field, by the um I I got a current record and a and a surveyor to verify when I did my A U because it was two or three feet away from an easement line, even though there's a huge heritage tree in between the actual roadway easement and and where I was building. Just because it's like, hey, if I'm going to do it, I'm going to do, you know, that I think it was seven hundred fifty or a thousand dollars to get that done. And and that's where the, having the surveyor verify will save money to the applicants over the full survey and setting property pins. Because you could do that, you know, you've got property pins. Um which, for those of you who aren't um land use folks, is literally a rod set into the ground with the surveyor's um pin, identification pin on top of it. And you can find those with a metal detector or by just scraping the ground. And then you can use that. And you can, you know, if you have two of those, you can literally put a string up between them. And that's what we were, we were talking about string, putting up the string line of the property lines. That's a physical manifestation and then you can measure off of that to where the building foundation is. Um but outside of requiring a survey for every project, um this is sort of the the next step down for the applicant cost, but still ensuring that the project's done according to the zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
I just have one quick thing to add to that, which is Sebastopol is so bizarre, I mean, as are most cities where how the property lines go, you know, they're, they make absolutely no sense. So I had a friend to, um, you know, it it really seemed like her, the neighbor's property was her property was the neighbor's property, way the tree line went, the way the, you know, so they went to build and they thought they were ten feet in, but it turned out that they really weren't, like it it it's so they 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 ended up getting, it's another horror story. They ended up not needing anything because they were well within their their frame, her neighbors who built, but it ended up being on her property. So I just feel like it is important to have some of that language in there because nothing is clear here. I mean, the the property lines, and we did look for those stakes, by the way, you show me the metal detector that we could not find the stake. We could, it's like a needle in a haystack. So we tried the string in the stake and that didn't work, but um anyway, yeah.
They they often don't exist, especially older neighborhoods, like those, the pins aren't there and you you have to have someone survey.
Heck, heck, I've seen a subdivision where they put a pin, and this was in the early eighties, in a tree. When you go back and you're like a tree, you're like, what?
We knew there were supposed to be pins, but it was finding them, that was the trick. So it turned out that it legitimately looked like she built in on her land and it just, yeah.
Yeah. Um. Item twenty-six. Um, a couple of things. Again, this is like one of those um. Actually, no, this is uh, this is like just a nomenclature. We refer to DPW, which I think we call our public works department. Um, we don't call it the DPW.
During, it is the Department of Public Works, but I think we call it the Public Works.
I think, I think we call it the Public Works Department. So I I that was maybe lifted from someplace that has a DPW, then whether, uh, you know, P W D or something.
We just go up Public Works Department.
I will just let everyone know that a lot of these were copied from the town of Windsor, that I had John correct those already. There's a lot of town of Windsor mentioned, but we got
Yeah, the engineer, because, yeah, Tony used to work for the town of Windsor, a city engineer. So we're we're getting her experience from up there down here, so.
Um and then this kind of goes back to the sort of categories on um under roadway improvements, it's like items twenty-eight to thirty-seven. Um some of those aren't really roadway improvements. I'm just wondering if they should be moved, like thirty-two is like um talks about um public utility easements. Um thirty-three talks about sidewalks. Thirty-six talks about retaining walls that are so I'm just thinking maybe those should be moved to a different section, not under roadway improvements. So people aren't looking for them and and just skip over the section because they're looking for something else that's, that's not a roadway improvement. I don't know. I don't know where to go. It just, this sort of jumped out at me as not roadway improvements. And then item fifty-four, um I think the first three lines can be taken out because it, I think, it looks like it was like a copy and paste, but then I something didn't get un, or it should have been a cut and paste, or I don't know, there was like, it's basically repeating itself.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So what we're trying to do there, just for the others on the commission who um we do require certain clearances um for the fire department vehicles, um sightlines, those types of things. But we do want to make sure, and that's the the eight, eight feet over sidewalks is not, you know, pedestrians don't have to walk through, or if you have, you know, some of a visual impairment, but they're not going to walk into branches. Um and twelve feet over street for trees is is a standard thing. But we do want to make sure that it's trimmed in accordance with our tree trimming standards, our uh arborist um standards. But yes, you're right, uh Chair Fritz, there's some different kind of language in there we can clean up.
Um, anyone else?
And then Chair Fritz, I'll I'll remind you to ask for any public comments.
Yeah. So if no commissioners have any comments, we can open this up for public comment if any member of the public wants to like to speak on this, now is your opportunity.
And if you would like to, you can simply unmute yourself and uh talk. We have, uh, but we don't have a timer, but we do all three minutes for public comment and I will track that. Okay, I'm not seeing any public comment here.
So we'll close public comment. Um and do you need any like motion to move this to the city council or whoever it's going, that is going to city council or design review or where's it go from here?
So it'll go to the design review board next.
Okay.
And then um city council after that. Um I believe Carrie and I spoke about potentially um if you guys would like to adopt these and implement these as of now or with the the changes that need to be made. Um that way we can start using it or wait till we get a full approval from city council to move forward with these as a uh full document.
All right. And so um again, if you do approve this for the planning commission related projects, um we'll simply just start using these as um conditions for projects as um as we're sort of making some of the corrections and um amendments suggested here tonight. Um and in my mind, that would be good from the perspective of any um projects. You know, again, it will be simpler for your review because you'll have our, we've already gone through these now and you won't have to sort of go through them each time. Um and it also provides some consistency for um staff review. And so that would be, Chair Fritz, that would be a motion to uh recommend the city council and also to uh authorize staff to use these as standard conditions for planning commission projects.
So would anyone like to make that motion?
I'd be happy to make the motion to approve the standards as amended this evening. Uh and uh recommendations to approve.
So it's a recommendation to the city council and authorization for the planning department to use them from planning department or planning projects going forward.
Yes.
I'll second that.
All right. Any last minute comments or questions?
No, just if you could send us an amended copy, just so we can be sure we've seen uh at least seen that that language got input there put in, uh that would be helpful.
Good idea.
Absolutely. And we will go ahead and um start using these, as John said, he's bringing this to the D R B that next week, John?
Next week. Yep.
Okay. So they may have certain additional tweaks and if they're you know, improvements, like a lot of the stuff, we'll just go ahead and um incorporate those in as well. I don't anticipate this is going to get to council until the beginning of April, just because of the city council's agenda, which is why I think, you know, we're recommending adopt them for use now and just to not have that two or three month lapse.
I wonder if perhaps, just to ease your view, uh if the cop, if the, if you can track changes and send us a tracked copy so we can see the amendments rather than having to go through each section, uh just so we can scan through and see that everything's been caught, uh that would be great.
Good idea. Um, is this something that needs to go to the council or can it, can can we just say, start using this?
Yeah, we, I think we can just start using those again, you know, we can technically put these on as regular conditions and have you approve them every time, so that that is the uh the planning commission's authorized to do that. I believe it's going to city council for a couple of reasons. One is the design guidelines subcommittee um discussed and said, yes, that they should see these and know about these as well. Um I think they'll, you know, whatever the recommendations D R B and planning commission have, I suspect they'll be more than happy to accept. Um the, and then there are certain conditions that is true or certain projects that do go to city council, like the Haunty Square or other subdivision type things. Um so they'll then have this and be familiar with it as well and understand what this exhibit is when they see it in the future.
Okay. That's good. So can we have a vote, please?
Okay, Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Burns.
Aye.
Commissioner Fernandez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dowd.
Aye.
Vice Chair Ottinger.
Aye.
And Chair Fritz.
Aye.
Excellent. So that passes unanimously and uh thank you, John, very much.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thanks, John.
Sure.
Okay, uh item six B is the planning commissioner training video. You're muted, Carrie.
Thank you. I just saw that. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and hopefully this works. If not, um please be patient. Um and so this is the, this is just as background for those who might be attending in the public. Um this is a planning commissioner training series that the commission previously discussed. Um and uh wanted to take as a group, and so we will have time for some questions. Um comments from the public, questions from commissioners and discussions after this. I believe this uh introduction is about forty-five minutes. And can you all see the screen?
Yes, it's not showing anything right now.
Right, but it's
I can see that.
I can see you scrolling on the side.
Okay, let me just hang on. I'm hoping this works.
I, I s-
All right, those are the next classes. All right, uh Chair Fritz, maybe you want to take like a five-minute break and I'll try to figure out the technology here?
Sure. All right, take a five-minute break, stretch your legs a bit, get some to drink. Did you figure it out, Carrie?
I did. It it did not like my browser, so I changed to log in on through a different browser and I have it queued up now. Or it logged me out one of the two, I'm not sure. But as soon as we confirm we're all back, you can go ahead and um share my screen.
All right. I've heard Linda, are you there?
Yep, I'm here.
Linda, you were here?
I'm here.
Okay, let's get started up again then. Thanks.
All right, we will go ahead and get started. And here we go.
There's no sound. Are you hearing sound, Carrie?
All right, so I guess I should have tested that.
You can, interesting, there's a setting on your screen sharing where you are share your computer sound as well.
Oh, okay, let me see. Thank you. Shares sound perfect. Let's see.
Lunging positions.
That's it.
A citizen can volunteer for. The objective of this course is to help you understand the basic duties and responsibilities of being a planning official. And we'll also be touching on some of the pitfalls and providing you with resources and tips to help you succeed in your role. Whether you are a new or a longstanding planning official, you know that you are among thousands of other volunteer citizens. And you've been given the charge to make a difference in your community. Don't forget, there are a wealth of resources and professional advice out there to help you perform your tasks. The key will be knowing when and how to access that information. Be sure to take advantage of the resources and tips highlighted in this course. Before we get started, let's define a few key terms. When we're speaking about a planning commission, that might resonate with you. But in other states, it might be called the planning board or the plan commission. The zoning board of appeals is often called the Z B A. But where you live, it might have a different name, like the B Z A or the Board of Zoning Appeals, or simply the Board of Appeals. The Z B A would be the board that hears variances and appeals and makes interpretations of the ordinance. Another term we'll be using is the legislative body. And that simply means the elected officials in your community. So typically, that might be the county board of commissioners or a city council. Now that we've touched on a few key terms, we will be moving on to chapter two to learn more about the role of a planning official. In this chapter, we'll learn a little bit more about the role of the planning official and some interesting opportunities that come along with the position. Imagine if you saw a job posting in the newspaper for planning official wanted. Let's think about what that description would look like. Candidate must be willing to sit through long meetings and respond to a sometimes angry public that is looking for quick decisions. The candidate must be able to plan entire communities and be responsible to neighbors, politicians, and special interest groups. Does that sound like a job you want? So why have you agreed to this position? As a volunteer planner, you are uniquely situated to know what beneficial and good development looks like for your neighborhood and your community. As the Help Wanted ad illustrates, being a planning official can be a stressful and thankless job at times. But it provides an opportunity to have an impact on the character and the development of your community. Planning officials need to work with members of the community and also within a region to shape a preferred vision of the future. Planners can also be instrumental in bringing all voices to the table and advancing diversity, equity, and inclusion to be responsive to all members of the community. Then there's the knowledge of proper tools like zoning that can help to provide certainty to residents and developers and create new opportunities while also decreasing the chances for nuisance and sprawl. These important tasks are the cornerstone of a well-planned community and a task of a planning official. However, given the complex reality of community planning, it's critical that planning officials know the fundamentals in order to be effective in their position. The term planning official will be used repeatedly throughout this course. Think of this term as interchangeable with a planning commissioner, zoning board of appeals member, or an elected official. It is any person that is engaged in the planning and zoning process. Next, we have a tip from Dr. Mary Ann Hydaman, who talks about the importance of being a planning official. I'm going to give you a few minutes to read the following slides. One of the first things that planning officials will learn is that they need to learn a lot of new information about housing and transportation systems and all sorts of things related to the community. And it's just really interesting. A second benefit of the job is that a planning official will interact with all kinds of members of the public that they would otherwise not interface with. So they're going to be learning new ideas and attitudes and understanding the community in a new way. Those new value systems and opinions will really help to sharpen your communication skills. Being a local planning official is sort of like a cram course in public leadership. And it could be a turning point in somebody's career or life to be making such important decisions for their community. So how can a planning official improve the productive interaction between the commission and the citizenry? Well, there's lots of ways. We'll just highlight a few things. One would be to educate the citizenry about both major and minor planning issues. Now, a major planning issue might be the importance of walkability or preserving our downtown. Where a minor issue might be something like you have three minutes to speak at a public hearing and thanking people after every public comment. The reason why those minor things are important is that there are lots of procedural and technical issues with planning that can be very foreign to the public. So the extent that they can be made comfortable is really a benefit to the planning commission. The second way to have that productive interaction is to use the media and social media to get the word out about what it is the planning commission is doing and the decisions that they're making. Being a planning official certainly is interesting. There are so many interesting opportunities and things to learn. Join me in chapter three, where we'll be talking about the difference between a planning commissioner and a planning official. Welcome to chapter three. In this chapter, we will be discussing the role of the planning commission and identify all of the various planning officials in a community. In order to define a planning official, we first need to define the planning commission. A planning commission is the administrative body that is typically authorized to review and recommend planning actions to the local legislative body, which is made up of elected officials. Planning commissioners are often delegated authority by the legislative body to make decisions on certain development proposals. In most states, planning commissioners serve as advisors for zoning and the development of plans. This means they cannot adopt zoning ordinances or repeal decisions. This is left to the elected body. The planning commission can also recommend land use policies for their community. And typically, this is done through the comprehensive plan. The planning commission is usually made up of appointed officials. And in some states, a planning commission might also include a member of the elected body. It's also common to have a member of the zoning board of appeals sit on the planning commission. In some states, it's required to have a member that serves both the planning commission and the Z B A. This is really a benefit to both boards because that one member or that liaison member that sits on both boards can really help communicate issues and policies to each other. Assuming that the state planning enabling act allows these members to sit on two boards, it is definitely a benefit for coordination and communication between the boards. Planning officials are appointed by the elected body. They are residents of the community. And they've been appointed to make these land use and zoning and planning decisions. So naturally, they're going to come from all different backgrounds and have different personalities. But they're expected to make decisions for the overall good of the community. The theory behind appointed versus elected planning commissioners is that it removes them from the political process and political pressures. We wouldn't want a planning commission to make a decision in order to be reelected, for example. The idea is for that body to follow the zoning ordinance and the plan. Another reason why they're appointed is that if there was an election, there could be an entire turnover of the planning commission at one time if they were voted out. And it's better to have continuity on a planning commission. Think of the planning commission as being sort of a think tank that generates new ideas while also being responsible to the public. This is different than representing the public, which is the elected official's responsibility. The planning commission derives its budget from the local legislative body. As planning commissioners serve as advisors to the legislative body, it's common to earmark special funds for consultants and legal support to assist with planning initiatives. Many communities also have staff that are funded by the legislative body to support the planning commission. Expenditure of funds for staff, meetings, and consultants are subject to procedures of the local government. Common planning commission budget items include personnel, contractual services, equipment and supplies, professional literature and publications, trainings and conferences. All right, so we've touched on the importance of the budget and the difference between a planning official and a planning commissioner. and the difference between a planning official and a planning commissioner. Next up, in Chapter 4, we will be learning more about the importance of transparent decision-making. Welcome to Chapter 4. In this chapter, we will be learning why all planning has to be done in open, public meetings. We just talked about how planning commissioners have varied backgrounds and unique perspectives that they bring to the community, that their knowledge and experience is going to help them frame their decisions. So now, we're going to introduce a concept that's just slightly different. It's also expected that planning officials need to act differently, even if they are an appointed official. They do lose some of their individual rights that they would have as a citizen outside of this public office. Why? Because the planning commissioner is a government official, just like the mayor, or a senator, or a governor. To the average citizen, you represent the government, even though a planning official is typically not elected. And so from this point forward, your decisions will be viewed in that context. As a government official, you might be surprised to learn that you don't have some of the same privileges that you do as an individual citizen of the community. For instance, personal conversations with a neighbor or developer about a pending development application should absolutely be avoided outside of a public meeting. We will be discussing this further in the Ethics course. For now, it's important that you understand that you cannot use private conversations and information obtained outside of a public meeting as part of your decision-making process as a planning official. All comments and discussions about an agenda item must be done at an open, public meeting that is accessible to all citizens of the community. Every state has some form of an Open Meetings Act that requires elected and appointed officials to conduct their business in the open. Make sure that you are aware of the Open Meetings Act requirements in your state and follow them. Not doing so is illegal, and it can expose your community to legal risk. Maintaining the public trust is one of the most fundamental ideals of all public officials. And it's something that has to be strived for at every meeting and with every interaction. As a planning official, you have been given public authority that must be executed with the utmost integrity. This means making decisions at open, public meetings and sharing as much information as possible prior to and during the meeting. In general, most citizens are skeptical about the government. So your conduct will help to either confirm or dispel this belief. Remember, the purpose of the planning commission is to serve the broad interests of the community. And there will be times when the community wants a quick decision, and maybe the right decision isn't necessarily the popular decision. At that point, the pressure is on, and it can be very tempting to have private conversations outside of the meeting. You might be tempted to pick up the phone and call another member to ask what they're thinking about the proposal. Remember that this is not appropriate, and all conversations need to be in an open, public meeting. So for this knowledge question, just take a minute to fill in the blanks. The answer is pretty simple. Planning commissioners need to make all of their decisions in public with information that was shared with the public. Practicing planning in the open is so important to building public trust. And it's really important to be consistent in that practice. And it's also required by law. Welcome to Chapter 5, where you're going to be learning about the fundamental duties of the planning commissioner and how planning authority is delegated by the state. State laws and local ordinances spell out the duties and functions of a planning commission. And this is done in accordance with specific enabling statutes for planning and zoning. It is the primary duty of the planning commission to work as a team to make or adopt a comprehensive plan. And sometimes, this is referred to as a master plan. Note that we will be using the term "comprehensive plan" throughout this program, but it could also be the same thing as a master plan in your community, or perhaps it's called a general plan. Another primary duty is to develop and recommend zoning and approve and review new development. Each of the primary planning and zoning bodies will inevitably have to deal with issues around controlling and guiding growth, or sometimes decline, as well as recognizing the potential implications for development in the short and long term in terms of benefits and costs to the community. While there's no one best way to describe what a development proposal is, a typical process would include: the submission of materials to the planning department for review, followed by planning commission review and consideration. Occasionally, that application may need to go to the zoning board of appeals if there's a variance, for example. And in fairly rare cases, maybe there needs to be an amendment to the zoning ordinance to accommodate this proposal. And that would go to the elected body. In those cases where there might be a zoning amendment, the planning commission would likely be involved in a public hearing to hear the details of that zoning amendment prior to going to the elected body for approval. With so many responsibilities, it's easy to lose sight of the overarching goal, which is to really implement the comprehensive plan by moving it from a vision to reality. Without a current plan, the planning official and the community are essentially driving without a roadmap or driving without their GPS on. The role of the planning commission really varies by state to state. And some state statute is very specific, while others are quite broad. So in the next coming slides, we're going to be exploring some of the variations between states. We'll start with Maryland. So in Maryland, the main purpose of the planning commission is really to create and recommend approval of the comprehensive plan. The planning commission also has jurisdiction over subdivision plots. And the statute allows the legislative body to assign other roles and responsibilities to the planning commission. In Washington, you can see here that this statute is much more specific. And here, the planning commission is authorized to make surveys and research and analyses. They can also make investigations concerning resources. And there's specific provisions here about solar energy. They can assemble and analyze data to formulate plans, cooperate with commissions and other agencies, in particular, cooperate with the state to aid in the preparation of a state master plan. And in carrying out its powers and duties, the commission should demonstrate how land use planning is integrated with transportation planning. Now, in Colorado, the statute is a little bit different, but it requires the planning commission to make and adopt a master plan, which is similar to a comprehensive plan in other states. They have control over subdivision approvals and can adopt a major street plan, which reserves the location of future streets. And finally, there's a provision there that says that any powers granted by the legislative body can also be retained by that body. There's another provision that outlines how the powers to plan can be retained by the legislative body or transferred to the planning commission. So based on the examples we talked about, what seems to be the most common role for a planning commission? I'll give you a moment to think about it. Making and adopting comprehensive plans, or sometimes called master plans, is really the most common role of a planning commission. Developing studies and surveys and analyses is also an important role. We can see that states are very different in terms of their planning-enabling legislation. So we encourage you to become familiar with that statute in your state. Next up, in Chapter 6, we'll learn more about the responsibilities of the individual planning commissioner and how to be effective in that role. In this chapter, we will be reviewing the responsibilities of a planning commissioner and how they can be effective in their role. Remember how we talked about earlier that being a planning official, you now represent the government. And as part of the government, your job is to provide a fair approach to meetings where both opponents and supporters of different ideas or proposals can be heard. In the zoning realm, another important responsibility of a planning official is to apply the zoning standards fairly and evenly and as they're written. Note that following standards in a zoning ordinance is not an option. It's required. To responsibly conduct the duties of a planning official, you really need to attend meetings regularly and do your homework. Be prepared for the meeting. It's also important to seek out professional development opportunities to continue your education and training. Attending meetings might sound very basic, but it is really important to consistently attend meetings so that you can represent the interests of your community and also be a part of deliberations and fact-finding. Be there to hear what the public has to say and what the other planning commissioners have to say, because it's never quite the same to read the minutes. Doing your homework means studying the plan or the zoning ordinance prior to the meeting so that you can better understand how a development proposal fits into the plan or the zoning ordinance. Trying to tackle all of that while the meeting is taking place can be very overwhelming. And you might find that you're playing catch-up and not really able to listen. So it's worth your time to do that homework prior to the meeting. So doing your homework means reading the packet before the meeting. It's not uncommon that a planning commissioner will sit down at a meeting and be opening their packet for the first time. Reading that information or reading the packet before the meeting gives you a chance to really absorb the information and think about questions or clarifications before the meeting. Finally, site visits can be a very important part of meeting preparation. A site visit is if there's a development proposal in your community, you take the time to go out to the property and take a closer look. Understanding the neighborhood, the infrastructure, the streets, and the surrounding land uses can really help to inform your decision prior to the meeting. Site visits may result in very important questions that otherwise wouldn't have come up if you didn't take the time to go see the property. Now, let's talk a little bit about a public meeting. When participating in meetings, it's really important to be fair, careful, and open-minded. It's important to speak your mind and be part of the deliberations, but do so with tact and courtesy. Remember that you are a public official, and you represent the government at that meeting. With many eyes on you, your body language will also become very important. So watch out for yawning or drooping eyelids, even if the meeting goes late into the night. Remember that certain body language, like yawning, for example, could translate to the public that you're really just sort of bored and uninterested in the meeting. And that can be fairly offensive sometimes. So beyond body language, let's talk a little bit about the bylaws. And the bylaws are a document that will really help to define meeting procedure. To ensure smooth meetings and standard procedures at each meeting, the planning officials should really review their bylaws. And if no bylaws exist, you should ask about meeting procedures, expectations, and conduct. It's really helpful to have bylaws so that new planning commission members understand expectations and procedures and to make sure that similar rules will apply to each meeting. We also encourage you to take advantage of professional development opportunities, like this course or other trainings, and attend conferences if the budget allows for it. That continued education of a planning commissioner will build confidence and help you stay current on issues. When a crowd shows up at a public meeting and all eyes are on you, that extra training will really pay off because you will know the fundamentals and the framework in which you are making decisions. The American Planning Association and its state chapters offer trainings, as does Planetizen. In addition, several other organizations representing local government offer trainings as well. This might include a municipal league or a township or county government association. Check with your state's cooperative extension service as well. They might be a valuable resource to you. Oftentimes, a new planning commissioner will be given several resources, including the comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance, bylaws, and maybe a list of roles and responsibilities, like this one. Here's an example from the city of Tucson in Arizona, where a new member is given this information so they understand what's expected of them, when the meetings will take place, the importance of seeking public input, conducting public hearings, and making recommendations on plans. This kind of information is helpful for a planning commissioner because it sets the stage for basic expectations of the position. Here's an interesting question. So should planning officials decide cases before the meeting begins? The answer is no. Decision-makers should not make a decision until the public has had an opportunity to weigh in on the proposal. Making a decision prior to that public input is really kind of unfair. And it's unfair to the applicant and to the community. We now know the importance of being prepared and doing our homework, going on site visits, and taking advantage of continuing education. We've learned the importance of bylaws. And perhaps your community has a list of roles and responsibilities that they can share with you. In Chapter 7, we will be learning more about the roles of the entire planning team, meaning the planning commission, the legislative body, and the zoning board of appeals. We'll see you soon. In this chapter, we're going to be talking about how various community officials and boards are all really integral to the planning process. The planning commission, the legislative body, and the zoning board of appeals are the primary entities that shape local planning and zoning. Specific duties and responsibilities for each of those bodies is authorized by state statute and local ordinance. One way to think about the local team is in relation to our state and national government structure. The roles of the local planning commission, elected body, and ZBA provide checks and balances similar to the democratic process. A key for the local planning official is to really understand the roles of each of these key players and how they work to balance each other. Let's quickly review how this works. The planning commission is an administrative body. So this is similar to the executive branch of government, where a governor or a president is the body that recommends policy to the legislative body for ultimate approval. Finally, the zoning board of appeals is a quasi-judicial body that interprets the law and considers how exceptions can be applied. This is similar to how the courts interpret law and determine if law was appropriately applied in unique situations. So now that we understand the checks and balances of those key elements, there are also a few other really important members of the planning team. That includes planning staff. That includes planning staff and consultants. And the consultants might be brought in for a specific plan, or maybe they're a key member of your planning and zoning team. And also municipal attorneys can be very valuable to the planning process. We'll focus on each of these roles in more detail shortly. There are also other entities with planning interests that may need to be engaged. That could be an economic development authority, a downtown development authority, or maybe a Parks and Recreation Board. So these other entities in a community should be brought into the planning agenda from time to time, and certainly they should be a part of any comprehensive planning process. Let's talk about some of those key planning roles in more detail, and we'll start with the planning commission. Planning commissions are residents appointed by the legislative body to give guidance on land use, planning, and zoning in the community. They formulate and adopt a comprehensive plan. They also make recommendations on certain approvals, zoning amendments, and new planning directions for a community. The planning commission typically reviews site plans, special use applications, and planned unit developments. They also review subdivision plots and condominiums. The planning commission may include a member of the legislative body or a member of the zoning board of appeals. These members act as liaisons between the various boards. Members of the legislative body are elected by the residents of the community. They make decisions on infrastructure and service provision. They can also grant or deny certain requests. They adopt and amend ordinances, and they also provide the budget and funds for planning. The legislative body is the city council, the village council, the township board, or the county board of commissioners. They have the power to also adopt the comprehensive plan. The elected body appoints and removes members of the planning commission and the ZBA. They set policy and adopt procedures for the operation of local government. In some communities, the elected body retains the authority to approve certain development proposals, like a subdivision plat, planned unit development, or a special land use request. Zoning board of appeals members are also residents of the community that are appointed by the legislative body. They act in a quasi-judicial capacity under the requirements of the zoning ordinance. They often have additional guidance and support from zoning staff or a planning director. The ZBA hears requests for variances, ordinance interpretations of either the text or the map, and they also hear appeals of administrative decisions. Those would be decisions made by the zoning administrator or the planning commission. Administratively, this is the board of last resort. So a decision of the zoning board of appeals would be then appealed to circuit court or to federal court if there was a constitutional challenge. Staff are hired by the legislative body and can include a zoning administrator and a code enforcement officer. This might also include a whole planning department or building department staff, and outside planning consultants or legal counsel. The role of the support staff is really to provide technical, legal, and professional planning advice to the legislative body, the planning commission, or the zoning board of appeals. So this is a simplified summary of the roles of each body or individual and what they're tasked with. We can see from this table that some duties, like enforcement, which is there on the bottom row, can only be done by the zoning administrator or code enforcement officer. We can also see that the legislative body can serve in many roles. For example, the legislative body could retain the ability to serve as the planning commission and the zoning board of appeals. As we saw in many states, the legislative body can retain planning and zoning powers, or they can delegate them to the planning commission or the zoning board of appeals. So it's interesting to think about the balance of power and how the requirements of state or local statute can really set up these very important relationships between the planning commission, the legislative body, and the zoning board of appeals. Generally, the planning commission makes or recommends plans and zoning ordinances, and the legislative body approves them. And the ZBA hears appeals and decides to grant certain exceptions to the ordinance through the variance process. Everyone should know their role in relation to others and be very careful not to invade each other's turf. An example of this imbalance or invading each other's turf might be if the ZBA grants every variance that comes before them. This would start to undermine the zoning ordinance and the planning function that is a part of the planning commission and elected officials' role. So remember that in some states, a planning commission may have a member of the legislative body or the zoning board of appeals, and in some states, this is required. That liaison is a very important role because they can effectively represent the interests of each board. Join me in Chapter Eight. We will be talking about the benefits of being a planning official, and then we will do a quick review of the course. Welcome to Chapter Eight. We've learned that this position can be thankless and stressful, but there are also benefits to being a planning official. Being a planning official means you have the opportunity to make a difference in your community. After all of your efforts as a successful planning official, you will have enabled and engaged all citizens of your community to be a part of the planning process, not just those few who show up. You will have ensured that quality development is achieved, enabled the community to express and implement its vision for the future, provided certainty of land use, and helped to conserve property values and natural resources. You will have been a part of preserving unique neighborhoods and what makes your community special. Equipped with the right tools, you can truly make a difference and be a part of moving the comprehensive plan from a vision to reality. So let's take a minute to quickly review the course. We started off with the job posting, planning official wanted, and we learned it's a stressful position, but it's also a great opportunity to make a difference. We learned the difference between the planning commission and a planning official, and who serves in those roles. We learned that we are now a government official while serving in this new planning commission role, and there are unique responsibilities that come with that position, like all deliberations and information has to be shared in public. We learned that the fundamental duties of a planning commission are outlined in state statute in those states' planning enabling acts. And finally, we learned that in addition to writing a comprehensive plan, planning commissioners will also be involved in the zoning process and making key decisions around zoning amendments. And in order to be successful, planning commissioners need to do their homework, go on site visits when it's appropriate, and be prepared for the meeting. The responsibilities of the planning official, in addition to comprehensive plans, will also include being a part of the zoning process and making recommendations on zoning amendments. The planning team is made up of the planning commission, but in addition to that, the zoning board of appeals, the legislative body, support staff, planning consultants, and legal support. And within those bodies, there is no one group that has total power. There are checks and balances in place similar to the democratic system. So why be a planning official? You have an opportunity to make a difference in your community, and you bring unique perspectives and background that will be so vital to the process of planning. Remember to take advantage of continuing education and training in order to strengthen your abilities to become a better planning official and community leader. Welcome to Chapter Nine. We're going to take a minute to reflect on what you've learned so far and run through a few scenarios to help you apply what you've learned to unique situations. I invite you to pause the video on these questions to take a moment and reflect before we talk about the answers. Can you name a common situation where a planning official might exceed his or her authority?
Okay, so playing along, I'm going ahead and pausing the video if there's any discussion by the commission. I don't know if you want to do that or just, you know, finish the video and then discuss some items. Any thoughts?
I think we should finish the video and discuss it afterwards.
Sounds great.
It's kind of redundant. It's, you know, the same thing over and over, so yeah.
Okay, we'll just go ahead and finish the video then.
A planning commissioner might exceed their authority when they fail to apply the standards of the zoning ordinance, or they don't apply them consistently. And worse yet, there might be a situation where they make up alternative standards that are not even in the zoning ordinance. There might be times when a planner doesn't agree with the ordinance, but they have no authority to amend the ordinance or pick and choose what they're going to focus attention on or not. Only the ZBA can hear these exceptions where an applicant needs to deviate from the ordinance. This is not the job of the planning commission. So this is an interesting question. What are some of those fundamental ideals that all public officials should strive to We touched on this quite a bit, that the public trust is a key currency for a planning commission to maintain. Remember that being a planning commissioner is a significant responsibility, and it has to be carried out with the utmost integrity. Remember that you represent the government, and all of your actions and decisions will be viewed within this context. Finally, all comments and discussions have to be done in an open public meeting, and this is to continue to build that public trust. Remember that it only takes a moment, or one bad decision, or turn of phrase to lose public trust, and it can take years to gain it back. What is the overarching goal of the planning commission? The goal of the planning commission is really to implement the comprehensive plan by taking that vision and adopting needed policies and regulation to turn that into a reality. And remember, without a current plan, that means the planning commission and the community is essentially driving without a map. The goal of the planning commission is to serve as advisors and to consistently think about and plan for the future of the community. Now you should be able to describe the role of the planning official, and who are they in the community. Remember that there's also those important liaison positions that might serve on the planning commission. In terms of duties and responsibilities, we talked about the comprehensive plan and zoning are the primary duties of the planning commission. We learned that elected officials can retain or delegate authority to do planning and zoning, but certain functions like zoning enforcement can only be done by the zoning administrator. And don't forget the balancing of power between the planning commission, ZBA, and elected officials. Planning officials volunteer their time and talents to do so many things, but the most important result of their work is seeing that the comprehensive plan is implemented to move that vision to a reality. Thank you for joining me in this first course to learn more about the duties and responsibilities of a planning official. Thanks for spending this time with me to lay the groundwork for the rest of this planning commissioner training. I will see you in Course Three.
Does anyone have any questions or comments or thoughts about that?
So I know that's really laying the groundwork. I can comment on a couple of things that are specific to our city. As you all probably know, the planning commission is, in essence, the board of zoning appeals because you are quasi-judicial, you're acting on a use permit of variance and those types of actions. And so while some communities have that separated out, others don't. I've also seen where there isn't a design review board, it's the planning commission. So there's a lot of different structures in that, but that was sort of one difference. And then as I noted in the chat, I will send out the planning commission resolution for you all. I know we've all probably looked at the ordinance, which are, those are the two documents that govern the planning commission actions here. The planning commission ordinance, we've been looking at this last year regarding geography of our out-of-town size, so, but we haven't reviewed the resolution, and so I will make sure I send that out, so if there's any discussion or questions about that at the next meeting, we can review that as well.
I've got a question. I can't remember if, I mean, I know we have to do the ethics training periodically. Is there like a summary sheet or something, or like the Brown Act requirements? Like, do you have anything like that handy, or does that might be useful for us to just refresh ourselves as well?
Right, I do have a couple of presentations. I can see if the city clerk or city manager has a, you know, like, you almost want like the quick guide, like, there are quick guides for running a Robert's Room or a meeting, but it's a whole book, it's the basics. I think I can see if there's something like that for the Brown Act. I do have, no, actually, I just sent it to our new public art community chair, a Brown Act in the Age of Social Media, which is actually pretty helpful with electronic communication, so I will certainly also send that out as well to folks. And the next session, I think, is ethics, so the next time we talk about it, it's a good time to talk about communications as well in my mind. I will say, if you do ever have a Brown Act question or a potential conflict question, especially if you're in the development industry, those are things you can certainly email to me or John, email to me at any time. If you don't feel comfortable talking about this directly in the planning department, you can always email Larry McLaughlin, the city manager, he's also the city attorney. And when I have questions, as some of you know, when you've asked me a conflict question, I'm like, oh, that's a good question, let me talk to the city attorney on that one to make sure that I get you the right answer. So between us, we can usually get an answer, especially if you're like, hey, is this going to be a conflict if I discuss this policy or whatever because of my situation type of thing? Where it's not the clear, I'm within 500 feet of a project, that's the easy one.
And they'll probably get into this more, but I think it's important, especially when there's like, you know, more contentious issues that come before us, to remember kind of what our role is and what the actual, you know, what it is we're actually here to do. We're here to enforce the zoning code, the general plan, and even though a lot of projects or proposals generate a lot of community, you know, outpouring, those are always the meetings that become, you know, the most intense, and you can kind of get swept up in a lot of that thing, a lot of that. I think it's good to sort of focus, like, you know, it's one thing if people are very passionate and for and against stuff, but, you know, remember, we usually have a very specific remember, we usually have a very specific role to play, and sometimes it's hard to keep focused on that. But I think it's important to kind of emphasizing, you know, keep emphasizing that, you know. Often, our mandate is actually relatively narrow for what we can and can't do on a specific project. Zach, go ahead.
Yeah, I would echo some of that. I think there is the challenge, that sort of, the concept that I think is sometimes hard to bring is that concept of open, of having an open mind. When you go into a meeting, we all know we have opinions about various things, and we have things that are near and dear to us, and we may, in reading the packet, have those triggered. But it's really important to recognize, okay, I know I have this opinion, but that's separate from what we're reading and maybe what we're considering. We're not robots. Those things, of course, are going to affect us, but it's the process of the meeting, for me, very often anyway. The process of staying open and almost, I sometimes think of it like peeling the layers off an onion as we're hearing the discussion. And you very often end up, and it may sometimes it isn't easy, you very often end up knowing more, kind of understanding better what the right decision is, and sometimes, not infrequently, it's not the decision you would have made without going through the process and learning more about it, if you see what I mean. So I found myself making decisions that I didn't know I was going to make and feeling really good about them, and like I've made the right decision for the city and the general plan. And, you know, bearing in mind, that's what we're here to do. And I think that's the hardest part of being on any board. And when you talk about the contentious issues, and this sounds trite, and I don't mean it that way, but we unfortunately have to remember in the contentious issues that half of the room is going to think we're idiots, and the harder half are going to think we're geniuses. And that's just the way it is. And that's why we have to find what we believe to be the right decision, because it's all we get to fall back on with a contentious issue. So there's the hard parts, but I think the training as a whole really helps us start to understand that. So I think these trainings commend Paul and Kerry for putting it to get, coming to finding the material. And I support strongly these kinds of trainings.
I also want to point out that sometimes it's not half the room and half the room. Sometimes only one group is in the room, and you've made them all mad.
That's even harder when your decision happens to be.
It's easier when it's a split room, but sometimes the room is not split, and you have to go against the majority of the room. That's the most uncomfortable.
And I think certainly there's, you know, as we kind of, we all knew, there are a certain portion where if I agree with it, I'm not going to show up at the meeting. If I don't, I'm going to, and so that, I think, now I will say with the Zoom meetings, it's actually been more balanced, and I think that's because we've had a higher rate of participation for, not necessarily meeting tonight, where it was, it's the minor decisions of standard conditions and things like that. But when we do have larger projects or more contentious issues, that certainly we've, in my experience, we've gotten much better participation online than when we were in person. And more balanced on both sides.
I agree with that. And I hope, you know, if we, if and when we go back to in-person meetings, there's some way to, you know, maintain this, you know, some level of, you know, interaction where people can do it from their home, you know, because I think that does get more community participation. We don't have to physically go to another place for a meeting. So I don't know how that exactly, but.
So the city clerk is working on that. It's, and most cities are kind of struggling with it. Like, how do we do a hybrid meeting like that where people can participate? And yeah, I think the COVID event has certainly changed that perspective, as it has a lot of, you know, work and how we do business. But that is certainly something I think we'll be carrying forward as a city. Because I think that, you know, the council also recognizes that, and it does make it more open in the sense of equity to me. When you think about people, I mean, there is a digital access, but of course, if you can come down to a meeting when they go back to in-person. But there is an equity if you have kids or you can't drive at night, you know, because you're elderly or whatever. It opens up for, it makes it easier for folks to attend.
Yeah, agreed.
There's one more point that I think is worth, that I thought was, have often thought about, but thinking about as a work system. And this is the sort of the combination of the application standards and the staff report and the works that the planning director or planning staff do, and how those two things warrant very careful reading. Because especially with contentious issues, people will tend to read the staff report, and, you know, they'll very quickly tell you how staff have made up their mind, and they're just trying to support and make you pass this thing. And staff's job is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kerry, but is to give a recommendation not based on their opinion, but based on the planning law, the standards, and their understanding of the general plan. So it's not a subjective opinion. It's an objective opinion that requires very careful reading of us and very careful question asking. And the first question is often, I have certainly read staff reports and needed to understand why that recommendation exists. And usually, it's pretty easy to find that it rests in the application of standards, essentially. So those two things are connected, and it's, it can be, especially with a complicated issue, it can be difficult when, for example, staff recommendation maybe is not what we imagine we would recommend, or in the first instance, and we keep in open mind with the standards and the memory. Sometimes decisions are going to be almost counter to our instinct.
Yeah, I would, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought up that point, because that is an issue. And that's, you know, my issue's always been how it's presented to the public. And we, as commissioners, know, and people in public or work within planning know, that when a staff report says we recommend for approval, that they mean based on the rules zoning, their review of it, right? But the general public doesn't know that. And as a general public, what they look at is recommend for us to approve it. And it's like, well, how can you recommend for approval if we haven't even had public comment or discussion and so forth? So I just have always said that that should be worded differently to say, based on our review of the plan, it meets all standards or zoning or so forth. And that that's what they're saying. They're not saying that they recommend approval of the project, because that's how it comes across. And, you know, I've always kind of felt that that should just be the wording, you know, to make sure that's correct. One thing that from, there was a little bit of conflict I didn't quite understand was it was very clear stated in the training that you should not use any information gained outside of the meeting to make your decision, but then they said you should go to site visits to get more perspective. Well, isn't that gaining outside information? Or doing research, you know, to try to understand a terminology or what other communities do, just to kind of get an idea. So that was a little conflicting to me that didn't seem to make much sense with that.
I think that was probably, I think it was maybe more that in terms of like feedback or input from outside the meeting, you know, in terms of like, like they said, you know, don't talk to your neighbors about projects. So I think it's, I think there's a separation there. You know, I think that's what they mean in terms of, you know, getting information at the meeting in terms of, you know, what the applicant has to say and what the, you know, neighbors have to say or what the rest of the community has to say. But yeah, I think it's certainly advisable to go to sites and do that kind of outside reconnaissance and just not.
Because I understood when they were saying, you know, don't talk individuals who use that, but it just seemed a little bit odd that they would say that, but just the way it was worded.
Yeah.
I think it's also good. I know that over the time period, depending on when a new commissioner comes in, there may or may not be a standard as to what they get, what training is recommended, required. And I think that might be something that might be good to add to our procedures. You know, that, hey, when a new commissioner comes in, these are, you know, look at this video or these, you know, so forth. And then also for existing, you know, we have the Form 700 we have to fill out. We have ethics. And, you know, something like this on an annual basis, just to kind of remind us of what it's all about. I think it's a good thing to, you know, just do either on your own or as a group. It's kind of nice doing it as a group, because it's, we can discuss it and points come up that, you know, we might not have thought about, and especially for newer commissioners and, you know, even veterans and so forth. And then the other thing with public notices, what I just seem to find is, you know, the city on, any, you pick a subject, you pick a development, they, you know, put out the notice it's supposed to be, right? So many yards away within a period of time, and every time, the public, a lot of public, hey, we just heard about this. We didn't know. You know, why is this being rushed through a decision? You know, give us more time. So I'm just wondering if it's, you know, perhaps we're doing, we're doing everything we can to do it properly, but is it really getting out to the general public in the way we think it is? Or are there other avenues? I don't know. But the answer to that, and a lot of it is just that people don't pay attention until something comes up that they're interested in or against it. And then at that point, they're like, whoa, I didn't know about this. And maybe it'd been going on for six months, right? Prior to that. So it's kind of hard to know, you know, what's accurate. But I think it's just always important to try to get as much word out as possible in different ways. So my points.
Yeah, and on that, I think, you know, one of the interesting things is, well, you did hear about it because you're at the meeting. So some part of the public notice was.
The time that, yeah.
Yeah. And so we have, just so you all know, our noticing requirement for the city is to post a sign at the property and in two other public locations. Usually, we use the library and City Hall as those locations where people come to the library these days in City Hall, certainly. But we always have all of our addendums and everything posted at City Hall. It's like the Humpy Square notice was posted there, so people could see that as well. We also mail out, for those items, like the standard conditions of approval, but it's not a development item. So we didn't mail out notices. But for a project, we mail out notices to 600 feet from any border of the property. So that's usually a couple of blocks. And then we do post in the Snowmaw West Times, which is available on their website and also in their print edition that they do once a week. So those are the, and those are pretty typical, I think. I think the state only records 500 feet. We do 600, so we do a little bit more, which is fine. And then usually, if the planning staff has people who we know are interested in a certain type of project, or like Humpy Square, we have a couple of comments after the planning commission meeting or before. And so we notify them, especially if they're not within the notice range of the next, of the next hearing via email. So if there's a project that's generating a lot of, we'll just put together an email group and email that group whenever there's another hearing on the item. So, and that's above and beyond what's required, but it's trying to, yeah, trying to make sure people who are interested know about what's happening when.
Do we have?
One of the things, sorry.
I was saying, do we have any kind of, I mean, I know you also often, things come out in the weekly newsletter or the monthly, you know, the monthly, the bi-monthly, whenever it comes out in your water bill. You know, there's often some projects, you know, bigger projects I see are often included in that. I'm wondering, do we have any kind of like social media posting that happens on any stuff? I mean, does the?
So we do have some items that are sort of the broader interest, like gas station ban and whatnot. They were putting, those are not specific development projects, because you have to treat everyone at a certain level on the same as we're doing those. But again, consistency with your regulations. But like the Calder Creek Nationalization, we had that in the city newsletter for the various, when the various meetings were going to be. So we have that as a tool. We do have a social media. Our PR person does, has a city Facebook page, and so she can post. Like our climate action framework meeting that we had last Wednesday night, that was posted to the Facebook page. And so there are, you know, there's certain costs for some of those. And but if they're like the housing fair, we certainly got the blueout. And if it's a larger policy issue, like a zoning ordinance, like the gas station ban, again, that's noticed in the newspaper. And beyond that, we notify and mail that to the existing gas station owners, so they all know about it, because obviously, there are probably going to be interested parties in that. And then, yeah, I did contact the Press Democrat about both the gas station ban and the climate action framework. And so, you know, for those that are clearly going to, should have a broader appeal to folks, we're trying to do broader outreach, as we cannot knows. So social media, I will say, is a little bit tricky in some regards, because, and I know Debbie's been working on with the Climate Action Committee on this as well. But there's public record retention of comments and things like that that a city government has to do. And so when you get in social media, it's a little bit, it gets a little difficult. So we have one person for the city who's doing, I think the police department has a Facebook page that they have responsible parties for. And we have for the rest of the city, right now, the one person doing those for us.
All right. Does anyone else have any other thoughts or comments?
I just thought it was interesting with the one ad example that they use. I'm like, yeah, why would anybody apply for that?
I thank you all.
Well, you see, they're having, we're having problems finding, filling, having problems filling Zach's spot. Big shoes to fill, Zach. So yeah, we're good. So moving on, we have subcommittee updates next. Anyone have a subcommittee they'd like to update us on? All right. Not a lot of subcommittee action. How about planning directors?
I was just wanting to kind of throw out there, which Kerry may talk about, the last council meeting regarding the Calder Creek and so forth. I just was kind of thinking that, I just wanted to throw out, no decision needs to be made for discussion, but just kind of wanted to throw out there, if it may make sense, we have a park subcommittee. And I think in the past, we may have either have it open to other members of the community or not just, you know, commission members. I guess it just depends on the committee, that it may make sense to have, include a member of the Little League organization just because their area takes up so much of the park. And when you're talking about different things, it might be good to get their input. And also their support, essentially, if they're part of the process, they can, you know, report back and hopefully, you know, more better communication. So I don't know. I haven't had a chance to talk with Kathy about that, but I just kind of wanted to throw out there, just see if anybody had any feedback. But I don't know if it's appropriate to talk about it now, or I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, all that, I was just talking with someone today who thought that they might be interested in being involved on that subcommittee as well. But until, you know, we really are having an action that we're going to work on, you know, I think at that point, when we are definitely working on an action, that we could announce public participation.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, I think that is, that is something that the city allows. I mean, it's your subcommittee, so it's not a council authorized subcommittee. It's your subcommittee. And the city council is actually encouraged that for other boards, like the Public Art Committee. And the Climate Action Committee already has a number of, they call them working groups for that body, but they have a number that do have members of the public. That's certainly allowed and encouraged.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
I'll add that the Climate Action Committee last Wednesday had a public forum online with a whiteboard. And we came, I attended it. I think you did too, Deborah. And I don't have any summary of what the comments were, but it was kind of an interesting process. I think my only takeaway was that we're such a small town, and we're talking about doing all these little things, and I suppose. Um, I think my only takeaway was that we're such a small town and we're talking about doing all these little things. And I suppose if everybody else. Did all those little things, it would add up to something, but I just felt like there's got to be a big stroke of a pen that's going to make a lot more difference. And maybe we could spend our time working on that, you know, figuring out what stroke that is to implement. Statewide, na- nationally or worldwide, um, could make a bigger difference than. The little tiny tweaky things that we're doing, but I know that's part of the process and so it's interesting.
Um, I, I also wanted to mention, uh, it's not really part of subcommittee, but, um, uh, Paula, there. You recommended, um, a, I guess a workshop on the, um, entitled towns.
The strong test, strong towns?
Yeah, yeah. I thought that was very interesting and, and would, you know, recommend. If it's videos available for, you know, the commission members or part, you know, city members and so forth to kind of. You know, look it over, listen to some very interesting concepts and different ways to kind of think about things, uh, as far as financial and so forth. So thank you for, thank you for recommending that.
Sure. Yeah. I mean, I could, I could send a link to that to Carrie to share with everybody. If people are interested in watching it on their, on their own. And maybe some point in the future, we could, you know. Once we get through this training stuff, you know, maybe we can start doing kind of, you know, that people find things that might be of interest, like some kind of webinars or things that we can. Um, watch when we have, you know, nothing on the agenda, you know, I'm open to, you know, continuing kind of learning about this kind of stuff. So, uh, Carrie, would you like to give us your planning director's report?
Sure. Thank you, Chair Fritz. Um, so I think, uh, our subcommittee members have mentioned a couple of things. Um, so yes, we did have our civic spark fellow put together. Um, and together with the climate action, uh, a few of the climate action committee members facilitated a climate action framework kickoff meeting last Wednesday. It was. Extremely well attended. I think we had, um. About 50 members of the general public and then I think the total registration was like 62 or something, including the climate action and the, uh, the mayor intended as well. And. Uh, yeah, it was, um, a great session and she got a lot of helpful input, um, for her project. Um, so her process moving forward, she'll be working with the climate action committee. Um. And she's, she's basically, she's moving forward to developing a climate action framework, which is kind of an action based. Um, recommendations of how the city should be thinking about climate action and, and certain, if there are certain specific steps. Um, that the city should be taking for that. Um. And so that will, uh, be coming to the planning commission later this summer, I anticipate. Um, just as she had done the, um, the preview of that, uh, presentation at the last planning commission meeting. Um, the, uh, city council did hear, uh, the Calder Creek item, um, at their last meeting. Um. They, uh, recommended option B, and which is the. Updated shred, uh, from the shred that Commissioner Fernandez and Ottinger attended, uh, with myself and the, uh, consultants. Um, so it'll be, uh, the consultants will be moving forward with that. Um, one of the things that did come out of that was, um. Uh, I do have, I've been communicating with the last full Little League president, Andy. Um, and he has agreed to come to our March 8th planning commission meeting to have just a discussion about. Um, what the Little League does and, um, just have an open dialogue and start, um, some of that communication that, um. You know, council recommended would be helpful and I know the commission was, was wanting, um. Uh, other agenda items, the, uh, draft agenda for next Tuesday, again, is always subject to change, but at this point it's mostly finalized because. Our, our report deadline is staff is done. Um, we'll include a discussion of, uh, the parklets, the Caltrans parklets. Next Tuesday to get some direction from council, um, staff, and I know Paul and some of the council members or a couple of council members have been meeting. Um, on and off again with some of the business owners and, um. There are, uh, I think a couple of parklets that, um, have a difference of opinion in some of the business owners and one that I don't think does. Um, so is staff, uh, since council made the original decision. Um, we are asking them for additional input on those. There is an opportunity to extend the temporary parklet. Permit, um, currently, which, and so that's part, that's one of the items is, um, to get input, um, on those. And then also discuss if there is a desire to make any of them permanent. If they do recommend that, um, I know one of the recommendations is that. Planning commission assist with what those standards and guidelines and what, um, what that should look like. Um, the second reading, the RV parking ordinance, I believe is also scheduled for next Tuesday. Um, and, uh, also I believe later. In a couple of weeks' time, generation housing, uh, Chair Fritz sent me a, uh, email. They are having a webinar, uh, for a report that they, um. Just produced on the state of housing in Simole County. And I think there's a couple, um. What, uh, state legislators who would also be attending that. So for those of you who are interested, uh, I think, uh, uh, we've already sent that link out to folks. And then lastly, for your next meeting, we, uh, we won't have any current planning items. So, uh. I run this by Chair Fritz, but I'm proposing that we do a, uh, another videos. The next video is in this training series is ethics and it's about 62 minutes. So. Um, I think probably one is enough since it's 60, since it's an hour. The, the next one is also an hour, which would make a pretty long video kind of session. Some of the, um. Unless there's a desire to do two of them in one night, um, I'm going to propose that we'll, uh, we do that training as our next, um, 22nd meeting.
Yeah, that sounds good to me. And I think, yeah, I think one a night is fine. I mean, I think that, I think it's good and I'm glad we're doing it. And, uh, you know, to your point earlier, Everett, when I originally presented this to the council, I suggested that, you know, in the future. And I think we all doing it together, I think is good, but I don't think we need to do it annually, but I think if new planning commissioners come on, they should, you know, it's a good idea for them to be able to. Have the access to this and, you know, probably within a certain timeframe or something after they get appointed to be able to go through the whole series, I think. Hopefully that can be implemented just so, you know, people are on the same page. But I think even for people that have been on the commission for a while, you know, I think it'll hopefully be a good kind of reminder of a lot of, you know, issues that we have to deal with.
Yeah. And Chair Fritz, I do do an orientation, um, with each of the new members, um, Mary, Mary, uh, the city clerk deals with the. Form 700 and the training, ethics training, um, but I do an orientation about what the planning commission certain scope, um, how the general plan and zoning ordinance work. Um, but obviously in a one-hour conversation, but it also includes the Brown Act and the oath of office. It's pretty limited. So I think, you know, this provides a little bit more background and detail. Um, beyond that.
Um, any other, uh, questions about the staff report or future happenings, past happenings? Go ahead, Everett.
No question. Um, the, do you know when the council will bring back the, uh, planning commission?
Oh, thank you. Um, the, so that item was scheduled for last Tuesday, did not get to that. Um, they, uh, right now that is. Uh, their, their schedules are pretty impacted. So I'm not sure. It may actually be April, however, the, um. The issue of the planning commission vacancies and what to do for that is on the next agenda. Um, the city clerk is doing an agenda item specific to that and a couple of the other boards and commissions that, um. You know, like the design reboard, we have two applications for where we need three, but do they want to just go ahead and appoint those two and then what to do with the vacancy? Um, so she has a specific item that's asking for direction on all of those, including the planning commission. Um, so that portion of it will be next Tuesday. Um, and if they want to discuss changing the size of the commission, um, I think we bring it to them as a, as an, as an item, a separate discussion item, because that could be. A whole discussion on itself. Um, the planning commission item is probably going to be like the first meeting in April, I think, or thereabouts. Um, again, that's the geography part of it, which, um, isn't a, in my mind, isn't a hugely time sensitive because you could de facto. You, you know, think about those geographies as a council, um, even without it being strictly in the ordinance. Just sort of a cleanup in that way.
Cause it seems to me that i- if there is any interest to talk about the size. Commission change, that's important to then, uh, put a hold on filling. Those spots until that's discussed. So I think that's an important. Item to, you know, if no one's interested and they're going to, one thing, if there is an interest, you know, put a hold on filling those spots. I, I don't know if that's. Kind of something to at least be brought up.
Yeah. Yeah. And so that is in there. If they, if they want, they do this or that. Don't, don't do both and then think about it. After you get an application and now it's, yeah.
Right. I will have to admit that I am a little disappointed in the city council's, uh, Calder Creek decision personally. I was really excited about the, the really, uh, kind of comprehensive approach to the park and was kind of hoping they at least make a. A bigger community conversation about it, but. You know, I guess it is what it is at this point. We have no, say, we had our, had our input. Um, but it's a little disappointing that, um, they didn't. So I guess first, I've had a lot of people come up to me since then. This is kind of an example of, oh, I didn't know about that. You know, in this past week, I've had a lot of people come up to me and say, oh, I heard there's something going on with Calder Creek. Can we make comments on that? You know? No.
Definitely if they're interested in, I would say definitely if they're interested in the item, you know, this is the first step. There's also, we're also looking at what Calder Creek might, might look through, through downtown. And other things. So if you want, you can have them send me an email and I'll put them again on that email list when, when the next time it comes in the commission, uh, I'm happy to let them know about it.
Okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll do that. So I have a few people that would like to be involved. Um, all right. There's. Nothing else. I think we are adjourned until the 22nd. See you all then.
Bye.
Bye bye.
Goodnight, everybody. Thank you.
Yeah. Night, everyone.